Call me need order please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mrs. Rickby?
Here.
And Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Melody is not with us this evening. Pledge of allegiance to give us going this evening. The flag is to my right, by your left. Please, United States, please lead us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion? Summoned by Mrs. De Silva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rickby. Questions or comments? Call roll please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Rickby?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes board zero. Public participation. We have three individuals sign up for public participation this evening, all on the topic of release time policy. I will call you up one by one when it is your turn. We believe we have an iPad to show the three minutes for board policy. Please make sure that you state your first and last name as you come up, please. Forgive me with pronunciation, last name, we do strike Katie Gillough.
Katie Gillough. Good evening members of the Board and Dr. Marshhausen. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to share my perspective tonight. I am here this evening as a parent of two young elementary students that currently attend Bailey. Several months ago, I became more familiar with the federal law that allows students release time for religious instruction during the public school day. As I began to seek more information, I realized that Dublin Schools does not currently have a policy in place to allow for this to happen. And if a parent such as I wanted to take advantage of this law, didn't feel that it was clear as to how. I am here today asking for you to adopt this release time policy for families like ours that would like to choose and the choice to attend religious classes during the day. As written, this policy would apply to any religion and is not specific to or limited to a certain denomination. Currently, about 70% of school districts in the state of Ohio have adopted similar policies to address the release time law in order to set some manageable requirements and stipulations for family who would like this option. Additionally, here in our surrounding area, New Albany, Whitehall, and Columbus City Schools all have policies in place and had students attending religious education classes this past school year, with upper Arlington, Westerville, Worthington, and Jonathan Alder all beginning this upcoming school year. Lifewise Academy is a release time religious instruction program which provides Bible-based character education to public school students. By adopting this policy, organizations such as Lifewise will be able to clearly understand their responsibilities and guidelines in which they can operate. Lifewise keeps things simple, legal, and practical. Specifically, we keep things legal by being keenly aware of the necessity to keep public and religious institutions separate. They are diligent to adhere to the relevant federal, state, and local laws and policies. Simple, as the curriculum focuses on the central messages of the Bible. They avoid getting bogged down in the finer points of religious doctrine. Instead, they focus on the most foundational themes that speak to the issues common to all people. And finally, practical. Lifewise seeks to create real and lasting change for students, schools, and communities. While I've shared a specific example and one that the community may be familiar with or have heard about, by voting to adopt this policy, you're simply setting needed parameters and guidelines for families who choose to pursue the release time for religious instruction law. You're not endorsing religion in schools or encouraging participation, but in fact, setting a policy that it must be separated from the school and held off school property during non-core curriculum subjects. You would be allowing parents of choice and allowing us to remain in the elite public school system that is in what we know as Dublin City Schools, while pursuing and allowing our children to grow in their character and faith. Please vote yes to adopt this policy and allow parents and families like mine a choice. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Ron Reitjer.
Goodness, we're trying to pass great. My name is Ron Reitjer and appreciate your service to the community of Dublin. As a resident of the Dublin School District with 40 years of experience in public education, 31 years as an administrator, I've sat through many board of education meetings and I truly appreciate the time that you guys put in and the contributions that you have to the community. I came out of retirement to work for Lifewise Academy. That's the organization that legally uses release time policy as a great work for our program. Policy allows us to work hand in hand with the school mission, the Dublin difference, by continuously improving everything to do in partnership with the community. Reason I'm passionate about the adoption of this policy is my first in analysis of the policy does complement the tireless efforts of your staff to produce good citizens. How exciting. The supportive parents are championing the policy to bring wholesome programming to the community. I've seen the adoption of this policy set the stage for win-win community partnerships that make positive difference in student behavior in the schools. Better choices equal a better community and a better community is a win for the school and for all residents. Thank you for your serious consideration in adopting this policy. And if you would so choose, I have some brochures available that speak a lot to the legalese of the policy itself. Some of the studies are gone behind you. Thank you.
And the third round speaker, Mrs. Ashley Chris.
Hi, I'm Ashley Chris. Good evening, board members and Dr. Marshhausen. My name is Asher Chris and I have a child in the Dublin City Schools, kindergarten at Thomas, and two following closely behind him. I'm excited to be here in support of release time religious instruction. This is a huge step coming out of my comfort zones, making fun of others. But it just goes to show how passionate I am about this time release program and adoption of this policy. I learned of release time religious instruction back in November and instantly jumped on board to help support the program. This idea was all new to me and learning that it has been a federal law since 1952 and then written into a law by the Ohio's governor, I wanted to take part in something special. As I've shared more about Lifewise Academy with many other interested families within our community, I became aware that majority weren't aware it's legal to practice release time in public schools as well. I feel this needs to be made known amongst our diverse community for all religions and denominations and Lifewise would be a great stepping stone to shine a light on this federal law. As Katie stated, 70% of school districts in Ohio have adopted similar policies to address release time law in order to give families the choice of religious practice. So this wouldn't be an out of the ordinary policy. On the contrary, to continue on without a policy may be out of the ordinary. This program would come alongside the school and teachers and help invest in the lives of students to support their mental health, character development, and academic performance. Studies show all of these improve by participating in religious participation. Lifewise has proven to be successful and beneficial to public school students who choose to learn from the gospel. This may be the only opportunity some students have to participate in a gospel-centered class with their peers that is so influential, especially in their formative years. Lifewise Academy is not partisan and release time religious instruction is something that can be practiced by all. This program is voluntary, off-campus, and privately funded. Any other questions about this program are really welcome. We ask that you vote yes to the document policy to give families the choice and help support the whole child. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, how's your next round?
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Just a couple of brief comments this evening. First of all, the Supreme Court issued a ruling on Monday that has policy implications for us and practice implications for us related to prayer in public schools, prayer events. I know our legal counsel gathered yesterday and I anticipate getting a legal brief from them that I will share with the board as soon as we get that. We will also be connecting with Neola, who helps us with our policies, who has a legal team. And I would anticipate conversation at the policy committee yet this summer. If there are policies that need to be changed, I would like to ensure that those are changed prior to the start of the school year so that there's clarification so we don't run into any confusion or confrontations in light of that recent decision. Also, we continue to field questions about House 199. I know that we've been working on our first tabletop exercise, which will involve all of the law enforcement agencies that serve the Dublin City School District. We will hold that the first week in August. The Chief of Police is pulling that together along with Mr. Collier, our Coordinator of Security and Safety. That will also allow for some risk assessments for us and some new challenges that we'll have going into the school year. I think it's also important for the board to know and I don't have an answer for you today, but one of the things that came out of our last Joint Safety Task Force were conversations about the Spring Primary Day. The fact that in May of non-presidential years and in March of presidential years, as we see more contentious activities around political candidates in voting, we may want to look at that Spring Day and consider if that's a day that we want students in the buildings while we have voting taking place in the buildings. We had some students at our last board meeting. Want to let you know that we are working on bringing a proposal to the policy committee related to religious holidays. And we'll be sharing that with the policy committee as our first step. And as we move through, considering all of the different religions that we serve in the Dublin City School District, we want to be mindful of our great diversity and what that means for us as a community. You'll see on the agenda, and I'm sure Mr. Stark will get into it in a little bit more detail, the third parcel that will complete that land purchase on Mitchell Dewitt in Industrial Parkway. With the addition of this third parcel, it provides us with 97 contiguous acres. As we go through our master facility study and we consider our growth, having 97 acres would allow us, if the community decides a location for a fourth high school, it also allows us opportunities for other growth buildings, other growth opportunities as we move forward. As you are all aware, we are active with our city partners on Monday for the Fourth of July. We will be in the parade as a group and you are all welcome to join us in the parade, as well as your families. And then we are proud as a district to host Monday evening at Kaufman Stadium. The city events, including three musical performers, most notably Rascal Flatts, and the traditional Fourth of July fireworks. And it's an example of the community, the city, and the school district working together. Finally, just two congratulations. Congratulations to Tom McDonald, who was appointed recently as the Superintendent of the Merry and Pleasant Local School District. We wish Tom well and thank him for his many years of service over two stops with us here in the Dublin City Schools. We know that Tom will do well there. And then just a personal congratulations to a good friend of mine, Paul Tenhoff, announced today that he'll be retiring at upper Arlington. And Paul has been a great partner. He'll be staying through December and then moving on to Vassam. But for those of you who know me and know Paul, you know our relationship and it's nice for Paul to be able to provide service to the UA schools for a decade. And now lots of congratulations to both Paul and Tom for what's next on their journey. I'll take any questions for members of the board.
Do you have policy questions?
We can do those after they've been moved, if that works.
It's recommended by the Superintendent of Education to approve the attached revised policies. Controversial issue, student supervision while the district open enrollment, use of medications, reducing medical authorization, protective facial coverings during pandemic epidemic events, and public complex. Is there a motion? Summoned by Mrs. Gillis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rickby. Any questions? We will have a couple small ones. As it relates to the facial coverings, I have a question for the member of the public on. God forbid we have run into a situation like we've navigated over the past few years where we get into the potential for exemptions. What occurs in that situation?
Well, one of the things that this policy does is it removes a lot of that specific language that was just really difficult for people to follow and allows us to create administrative guidelines. If allowable by law, we will have the opportunity to provide exemptions. What this policy states is if a governing body that has the authority to mandate face masks, we will do that. If it's something that's not a mandate but a recommendation, I could make that decision or the board could make that decision. And then, once this policy is adopted, we will create the administrative guidelines that will put those policies and those procedures in place. One of the reasons I didn't want to put them specifically in the policy is technology changes and how we would gather information changes. I know we are all hopeful that we are not dealing with facial coverings again at any time in the near future. This would allow us to, if there's impact, that we would allow parents to opt down on. If there's a Google form, we could create that opportunity for that parent choice and we're not tied in policy to this specific procedure to follow. So those things would all be covered in administrative guidelines.
And then my second one is less on the actual policies and more so just in terms of public information, public knowing. Throughout the school year, we obviously update policies. As we approach a new school year, how is the staff educated, informed about changes with policy, especially bigger changes that impact? What goes on in our classrooms?
We've been working as an administrative team. Our goal this summer will be one to get all of the changes to our principals. We're looking at our administrative retreat, Mrs. Schwanke and our team, as we bring on Mrs. Altous and through Mr. Allred. In order for this to be understood by our teachers, it can't be an email. It can't be a document that says, "Read this. Here's everything we've changed." As we go into this school year, as the result of court cases, as the result of policy changes, it's going to have to be face-to-face conversations. And the time to do that is at staff meetings as we start the school year and having conversations. Our principals also know their staffs and there are people who they may need to have been more specific conversations about. Just like in a classroom, we provide personal instruction and differentiated instruction, principals need to provide differentiated instruction with their staff. So as we work through some of these policies, if there is a policy that if I'm a building principal, I know I'm going to have to talk to this teacher to reiterate what the intent and impact of this is, we'll take care of that through the principals.
Any additional questions on item 3D? There may none. Please call roll.
Mrs. Gillis? This is the vote. For the first round of the vote. Is this not the vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Rickby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes board zero. Moving on to item 3C. Release time for religious instruction. It's recommended by the Superintendent of Education to approve the attached new policy. This is the second reading. Any additional comments that you'd like to make at this time? Is there a motion?
Summoned.
I was seconded.
We've received a lot of emails about this policy, a lot of public conversation about this policy. I'm glad, this is how it should work. This is why we have a first reading and a second reading. It allows us to have the opportunity to share a policy recommendation. This is a recommendation that I brought to the policy committee, which is one of the specific duties that I have as superintendent, is to make policy recommendations. I understand the conversations that we're having as a community related to this policy. The reason this policy was recommended by me to the committee is that this provides the opportunity for clarity and consistency and simplicity when we work with any religious group. It allows us to then develop the guidelines. It allows us to work with our insurance company, with Mr. Stark on the liability waiver. It allows us to work on the offices with the release procedures to make it easier for building-level administrators and makes it easier for our principals and our secretaries to know that on the days that students are going to be released, this is where they come together, this is the time they get picked up. In the unfortunate event that something happens once they've left us, it makes it clear that it's parents' decision and the organization that's signing them out is so unresponsible. So my recommendation with this policy is to both protect the district, to make it easy for our office staff and our teachers, and to make it clear to any partner that these are the processes that we would use if you choose to exercise this right. I think one of our speakers said, and I don't mean to steal anyone's thunder, that when we're able to provide that clarity, it makes it easy for anyone. And it can be any religion. It can be any of the many partners that we have in the Dublin City Schools. So that is why this policy was recommended by me. And I am pleased that we've had such a robust discussion at a community level and in a public level. In my opinion, this is how it should work, is this type of civil discussion. I know that Mrs. Whitby was able to join us for the community coffee that we held at the library. It was a topic of conversation at the community coffee and it allowed us and our team to provide clarity and answers and answer questions from members in our community about the why. And I think all of those things are important as we work through what can be issues that generate passion and strong feelings and it allows us to be intentional in what we do.
Questions or comments this round?
Yes, I have a comment. Given that I'm a member of a church that is likely to be approached by an organization to possibly highlight this program or pilot a program under this policy, I feel like it's best for me to refrain from weighing in on it just so there's no perception of conflict of interest or enforcement of any religious organization.
Thank you. Mrs. Gillis, Mrs. Rickby?
I understand the policy a hundred percent. I think that, Dr. Marshhausen, I appreciate you being proactive about trying to kind of handle this from a clarity, consistency, liability for teachers and staff and parents. I guess I keep coming back to core subjects and what about related arts? And how all of this is operating is still not super clear to me. I get the policy, but I'm missing the instruction, if that makes any sense.
Well, like I mentioned with the facial coverings policy, this gives us the ability to, when approached by a partner organization, say core subjects are out of the conversation. That's also a deal of our city. But it allows us to, of course, we would like all of our students to be at their related arts school. Of course, we see the value in our use of physical education and micro tech. Those are things that are central to a well-grounded education. When students would be pulled out or when they would be released for the religious instruction, we would do our best to partner with someone so it wasn't during those times. But this gives us that flexibility, depending on where we are. I know that some of our buildings would have time on lunch and recess that you'd be able to do. When you look at the law and you look at the time that we have in the school day, there's only so much time. So if a parent made a choice that their student was going to miss part of our day that wasn't core instruction, we would do our best, but that could be a parent choice and a student could be missing a related art. But we would make that clear to mom and daddy for making that choice for the child. And we would make every attempt to minimize that disruption as we work with any partner or organization.
Okay. I just really feel that we have fantastic curriculum, fantastic teachers. Again, I get the reason for the policy. I just really don't feel as a public school district disruption of any kind for any reason. Those would just be in our district at all. I guess I don't have any more questions. That is my comment.
I mean, the only thing I can say, Mrs. Gillis, to that is I'm not sure if it's disruption. You know, again, just a reminder, this is not compulsory. This is, you know, a parent's choice and there could be parents who feel that, you know, they may be doing faith-filled things on the weekends but also would like to incorporate that at some point throughout the week. And, you know, their right is such that they can do that. And I think it's important also just to reiterate, it's not, you know, the promotion of any one religion. This is open to everyone. And there's, you know, no mandatory thing that says that they have to do this. So I think that, in that respect, you know, I just choose to look at it as this is a parent's choice and a faith purpose may be very, very important within, if you want to call it curriculum development citizenship to a child, to that family. And I think it's, this is not a policy on Lifewise in particular. This is a policy on any religious program that comes here. How do we make it the most seamless policy to adopt? So that it's consistent, the procedural, you know, guidelines, guidelines are there and, you know, it's a practical application of what would be, you know, a policy that covers all the bases in terms of getting them to and from and how it looks within the school day.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Rickby. And how? For me, this is not about Lifewise. For me, this is about adopting the policy, no matter what the religion is. Even if we had every religion come to us right now on the table, I just truly believe in being in school for all classes, not being removed for, I don't want to say we're having religious education. I am a Christian, I attend church. It's not about that for me. I feel like we really need to have our kids in school for all of the curriculum. And that's just truly how I see this, so. But I appreciate your comments and talking through this with me over extended period.
We had a good conversation today as well. And I think that your perspective or your stance, that regardless of religion, I think it holds true with, at least what you've communicated here this evening within the conversation that we had. I think for me, as we talk about this policy and its unique, there's some members of the community clearly that push and have behind it. There's some members where we've gotten emails that I would say have gone around with fear mongering and trying to say things that I think are unbecoming and would go against what I think all of our shared goal of being an inclusive district. But ultimately, I, there's no changing how each other votes here. But it also takes me back to a person that we had to make a decision about mask exemptions. And one of the things that you had said that evening was, and through those conversations, and we're talking apples and oranges, I get it. But allowing parents to make the choice that is best for their child. And I think that this, from my perspective, this is sound policy on one end. On the other end, it allows parents to make the choice that it is right for them. So I think that these discussions, we can necessarily have these with previous board, whether or not it could be because people are like-minded or otherwise. But this is Dr. Marshhausen's, and I think this is call roll please.
Mrs. Rickby?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
I'm standing.
And Mrs. Gilchrist?
No.
All right, motion passes two to one with Mrs. DeSilva abstaining. Moving on to reports and action items from the Treasury Office.
Yes, we have quite a few on this meeting. I appreciate everybody's flexibility, as I know normally we have meetings on Monday, but this allows us, as we get to our year-end here at June 30th, to approve these final stuff for 2022 fiscal year as we move into and also fiscal year 2023 starting Friday, July 1st. So I do appreciate that flexibility. Just to start with a few non-fiscal year-end stuff, I do have some donations from the National Association of Soccer and Busters, so we appreciate those. We have one purpose clause in the scene to be approved for the Green House Club and Davis Middle School. And then we also have the May 31st financial report. As you can see, attached, we are on target of estimates at this point, but just a reminder, this does match up with the May 1st revision, our five-year forecast revision, just ahead as we move through. So let's go one by one here, and for the board members, new board members here, I'll talk a little bit about how we develop our 2023 budget, just a little. We've had individual meetings as members on board, but just for our public hands, since we have new board members, we'll talk a little bit about that. But as we travel up 2022, we do have cash advances in here. These are temporary advances or loans to funds to cover negatives that year-end. As you'll see, most of those are from our federal grant funds there as our, we are allowed to, we do ours on reimbursement basis, so we spend the money that has for the revenue after that or the reimbursement. Those are cut, were cut off, I believe, June 14th approximately, so as we have payroll and different accounts payable throughout the rest of the month, we do have negatives there, and so we'll be requesting the cash, and once we get that in, the advances will be returned to the general fund. So those are just temporary as we go through the year, which are different than transfers. Transfers is a permanent moving of money to the other to the other throughout the year, and we have different of those throughout the year, and we'll explain as we individually approve those. The final appropriations are here. As you can see, for FO 22, we have a lot of funds here that we are responsible for, and we do appropriate our budget at the fund level for most funds except for our general fund, which is done by the act or, for example, salaries, benefits, purchase service, and supplies, et cetera, are budget even lower level than that. Those are our final ones as we close out the year. And as a reminder too, this stuff is June 30th. We require it filed by June 30th for both 22 and 23. County Arters Office from Prime County County of Art, and to have that these in otherwise as part of our ground building or laws that we have to file when our others come in. So FO 23, if you notice in here, I put in executive content there what we used to term our green book. It's buildings, apartment, but the reason it's called green book is because in the good old days, when we printed stuff, it had a green cover for it. But now, of course, it's electronic with that. But as you go through that information, really, the question is how we go about and develop budgets from a building budget perspective. It's based off estimated home that we have, and then we true off once kids get in school in the fall, based on their, we have per people allocation. But then we also have, based off of units, when I say units, it's teachers in those areas, whether it be special education, ELO, gifted, and so forth, and those things, we do additional higher allocations to those buildings. So we meet them, depending on the needs of each building, we have those allocations out to them. So that's kind of how we meet them from a building perspective. And we do, from a building perspective too, also allow carryover in the budget. So if from one year to the next, they don't spend their money, they are allowed to carry it over as maybe they have to man individual items for their building, this will allow them to do that. And also, it's not that, oh, I gotta run out and spend my budget for a type of situation. So we allow them to do that. The departments, we do cutoff and do budget every year with that as we go forward. Now, what we do is have individual meetings, and Mr. Stark's here, and we talked about him earlier, is, I know Chris McDowell is my accounting coordinator, spends half a day, almost all day out there with his crew going over, he has the biggest portion of probably what I call the non-payroll items. Eighty-five percent of what we do, as I mentioned this in five-year forecast, is salaries and benefits. But the other stuff, Mr. Stark has the largest share, the delivery utilities, routine fixes that are not permanent improvement related and so forth. Transportation, which will be your fuel, is another, also our big line there that we have. So and repairs are of us and so forth. So we do sit down with each individual department and kind of go through those separate areas in developing the budget. So what you see here is a roll-up of all that, and that executive content, that building department summary, is all individuals, buildings, buildings are related to what's called an operation unit, for example, Bailey Elementary is zero zero one, and you'll see that throughout the things, and kind of how they spent their money last year and how they're planning on spending it this year. So it's really kind of a high level. You see all the Google Sheets and spreadsheets that are involved. You would have fun with that. Just kidding. So there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of time that goes into it. So I'd like to thank everyone, including my staff, but also the department heads and especially our faculty level people. I know it's very important that they spend time combing through everything that is happening. So one of the things I would like to mention too is, you know, with everything that's going on with inflationary increases too, that's hitting us as it's hitting everyone else, so whether it be fuel, utilities, or whether it may be supplies even, that stuff is the best can we try to factor those in for the budget this year. Any questions on the budget process? And the last thing I would like to touch upon too, as I know we mentioned the land purchase right now too, and I suppose we did some talk about it, Mr. Stark said it a little bit, but, you know, the question is, you know, we talked about from the groundbreaking, you have this groundbreaking number, I've been cutting it in the last time, so, but that the groundbreaking, being accountable to our taxpayers out there, as you know, we're predominantly eighty percent of what we funded. With that is, you know, for example, we're using the funds to purchase the land, comes from several sources primarily for Eversole and whole other elementarys, as we have planned budgets out there as we work through the process, but coming on time and under budget, we always appreciate that. It's hard work to get a lot of people, not only operations, Tyson in my office works with both operations and destruction, and I want myself and sitting in those meetings to really make sure stuff gets done, managing the budget process when it comes along, that we have the additional proceeds for that. Plus, it is just as we have other land purchases that we've made, as contingencies may, when we do budget and, you know, developing the bonds out there, is having that flexibility in case we have those things that come up like this that are available in the best interests of the district. So if anyone ever reads the bond language, it's very, very, a little bit specific in the sense that allows us to do, have this flexibility in those uses of those forms. So with that, so I think this is a great purchase for us, as you know, pull well on trade that, and I believe we had a very clear, actually, build on this. It's having those things available to us is always something that's important.
There being, by the Superintendent Board of Education, proof items 4B, 4C, 4D, 4E, 4F, 4G, and 4H. Is there any motion?
Some.
By Mrs. DeSilva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gilchrist. Call the rollers.
Mrs. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilchrist?
Yes.
Mrs. Ripley?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Straight to the firm of operations.
Academics, nothing. All right. We've got them all last night.
All right, first, we have a few things on the agenda tonight. The first one is kudos to Chuck Collier here. Chuck applied for a number of safety and security grants. One of the great things about Chuck is he's always looking out for that because there's a lot of money out there, and he's had to put it forward, and Chuck was able to get a security grant that gives us additional film that we're going to be putting on a few of our schools in different areas. We're not being rigorous, so we're not very specific on where we put this type of film. What this film basically does is it's a film that stops glass from being shattered and it's proven to give another thirty to forty-five seconds around that area for people to react if, God forbid, there was something. So the first item is, this has to be publicly bid, since this film will give public improvement, hopefully a thousand dollars, and this is to hire Ford Associates to put together the whole project, get all the measurements together, all the bid specs together, and run the project on our behalf, and that is a service with Ford Associates for eleven thousand seventy dollars. That's the first item we have. The second item we have, again, Chuck Collier worked on this, this is our annual contract with the City of Dublin for our SRO contract, our school resource officers. This contract is an act of seed for three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. It provides, so with seven officers and two supervisors. Two of the officers we get is two city tax dollars, the other five are paid for to buy this, three hundred twenty-nine thousand. The raise this year was very, very slight, about a percent and a half compared to what we paid for last year, and all of that is usually benefits and salaries. The board will be receiving, we're hoping, by next week, here with Union County, that's our SRO, that and Eversole, so that'll be coming next week. This one, the next one, deals with our addition we did tonight, it's our second GMP. There will be three GMPs, it's guaranteed maximum price for this addition. The first one the board approved a couple months ago, and that's what got us to start this project. And if you remember, we rushed to get that one out because there were some key things we needed with large, large lead times. So that's what able to get us a million on that. This next GMP, which is the largest of the three, is for eighteen point eight million dollars, and it's really for basically the majority of the building, exterior walls, mechanical, electrical, technology, fire suppression, plumbing, what have you. It's really for building to building. And with this, approval of this GMP, we will begin to order starting tomorrow, and this is this, this includes quickly. The next GMP on this product, and it'll be the last one, will be later, later this summer, possibly, or the fall, probably August, September area, and that could be a smaller one. I say smaller because it's contingent. We know it's going to be a furniture, furniture will be a big portion, but the other pieces, we're working right now with Washington Township Fire on whether the addition is going to break the grandfather clause for this building. So this building has a fire suppression system that works, our alarm system that works just fine, but the new addition will have an upgraded one, and we're working right now on what their requirements are, if it's going to require this entire building to change over. It's a large expense, and we're working through with the City of Dublin, Washington Township, and what's the best solution to do to this coming up. On the Jerome, we want to talk a little bit about, you know, once we build this addition, the portables will be going away. So we have one more year of portals here, and oftentimes, there's questions around the portables and the security, and we take that very, very seriously. You know, this is a portable area out back, it's a very heavily monitored area, heavily monitored. We have an onsite SRO here, while the students are here, there's instructions, John and Bob at all times, and it's a quick time to do with cameras as well. In addition to that, as Dr. Marshausen mentioned earlier, there's going to be a joint, there's going to be a tabletop exercise with a joint security task force, and this task force is made up of Dublin Police, Columbus Police, Washington Township Fire, Union County Sheriff's Office, and they're going to be doing a full safety assessment, which includes our portable area. So we have a lot of attention, you know, this is not an ideal situation, that's why obviously we're doing the additions, but while it's here, it's got to send a lot of attention, and it's going to continue to get that included with this joint task force to really take a look at what more we can do. Last item for approval is the slam purchase. This is the third of, this is the third parcel of three. We began with two parcels, which are all continuous, which is basically a negotiation, everyone on the same page that we're in, but bringing the board all at the same time. But with approval of this agreement, this will give us ninety-seven, a little short of ninety-eight acres of contiguous property, an industrial parkway in Mitchell-Dewitt Road. Our closing, we're scheduling, our goal is in September. Right now, we're going to take the next sixty days to do due diligence, and that includes Phase One environmental look, a wetlands look, historical preview look, a endangered species, we're looking for anything that can possibly not be good for the district, but we don't anticipate any of that, it's all good, due diligence to take, and we should be done with that soon. So with the approval of this purchase tonight, and I think that this parcel is thirty-two acres for about two point five million dollars, we will be off to the raises for its closing in September. Any questions?
It is recommended by the Superintendent Board of Education to approve the attached resolution and GMP amendment authorizing a guaranteed maximum price in the two GMP with Elford for the Jerome High School addition project, as well as item B, item C, and item A. Is there a motion to approve items seven, eight, through seven, and D?
Some. And the second.
Move by Mrs. Ripley, second by Mrs. Sol. Call the rollers.
Mrs. Ripley?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilchrist?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Stark. Good job.
Good evening, Dr. Marshausen, and, Mr. Colonel, members of board. We have some items on, and I'll start with the surgical ID charge agenda tonight. You'll see a correction to an administrator's salary that was forwarded during our last meeting, that's the first item. There's also appointment of a records compliance officer working in our enrollment center effective July 1st. You'll also see three teacher resignations, which have been since our last board meeting, and ten new hires, and we are down now to about six more teachers that we need to hire to start the next school year. There are several salary adjustments on this agenda, along with summer school programming, staff additions that were needed to be made in order to complete summer school. You'll also find several of our buildings that we need to have teachers teaching six periods for the upcoming school year on this agenda for you to approve, as well as a leave of absence. We have a teacher that will be an administrative intern at Glazier-Oryge Elementary for next school year. There are several supplemental contracts and pupil activity supervisor contracts on this agenda. These are primarily for fall 2022, and then there's a few year-long on for your approval as well. Moving on to the classified agenda, you'll find a new job description that's on for your approval. There are four resignations, and we have seventeen new hired as well. There's another summer school staffing request, salary change, and then two unpaid leave of absences on for your consideration. And then finally, in the stipend section, there's sixth-grade orientation at Eversole Run Middle School. We approved the other ones during our last meeting, and then there's a stipend request to approve for school bus onboard instructors that provide driver training to two staff members who work in our transportation department. Any questions for, to the resources portion?
There being, it's recommended by the Superintendent Board of Education to approve items nine A, nine B, and nine C. Is there a motion?
Some.
Move by Mrs. Gilchrist, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Ripley? Call the rollers.
Mrs. Gilchrist?
Yes.
Mrs. Ripley?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSilva?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Future attendants?
Just to note that we have a meeting a week from tomorrow at Central Office. That will be the meeting that allows us to hire anyone who would need to resign before the statutory July 10th date, so that's why we have two meetings back to back. I do anticipate that being relatively light a agenda, I don't think. I will have recommendations, academics, prime I don't think, I will have recommendations, academics probably will have recommendations. It will probably be limited to HR and anything that we need to approve from Mr. Stark.
Motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Move by Mrs. Ripley, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. De Silva, all the members say aye?
Aye.
All of us approve. Motion passes four to zero, we are adjourned.